Okay, now I've got nine o'clock and we're all settled in. So we'll go ahead and start. My name is Barbara Bynum. I'm the mayor and this is our citizen interactive session. I think this is the third one we've had for this idea that was new for council this year. And it is in response to the idea that we don't really have scheduled regular time to dig into a single topic with citizens on an issue that they might be concerned about. And to be able to have a conversation, back and forth dialogue, information from the city side, input from the citizen's side. Because we realize that, for example, public comment at our regularly scheduled city council meetings is just three minutes for citizens to tell us what's on their mind. And because their concerns aren't an agenda item, council can't really respond and have a discussion about the item. So this is an opportunity for us to have more in-depth discussions. This morning, we'll go around and we'll all introduce ourselves, but this morning the topic is dark skies and lighting. And that is something that, I know for me personally, multiple residents have said they have questions, they want to understand better. And so what a great opportunity to dig in a little bit deeper to the city's approach to lighting and our philosophy and how we actually do lighting and to hear from, you represent all the residents in Montrose this morning who are concerned about, about dark skies, right? But to hear from our residents, their perspectives on that issue. So I think to kick it off, we'll just go around and we'll each introduce ourselves. I'm Barbara and I'm the mayor.
I'm David Reed, Mayor of Croton.
Go ahead, Ben.
I'm Ben Boris, City Attorney.
Brian Cashin. I am president of the Black Canyon Astronomical Society, but my interests go beyond astronomy.
Jace Hawke, I'm the planning manager.
I'm Nick Pridey, Street Superintendent.
Ed Yulbury, City Council, District 2.
Fantastic. Jace, I'm gonna kick it over to you to kind of start us into this conversation.
I can, maybe I'll pass it to Nick here.
Okay. Look at that. Okay.
Yeah, so I think we invited Brian here to talk a little bit about the Dark Skies Initiative. And I guess as a precursor to that, we had started a project.
Oh wait, hang on.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Frank. I'm so sorry. Dave Frank, Councilmember Dave Frank, is joining us by Zoom. And so he's here, but virtually, and I didn't mean to ignore you. We've talked about how hard hybrid meetings are, Dave, so my apologies.
The ghost of the machine today.
Yep. Sorry.
No problem.
Okay.
No problem. So we, earlier this year, we had started a project where we are exchanging all of our street lighting for LED lighting. As a precursor to that, we wanted to meet with Ryan and talk about the Dark Skies Initiative and make sure that what we were swapping out would meet that, at least meet a standard or be compliant. And I think we found that all the fixtures that we were transitioning to would meet that standard and we just thought that he had an interesting program, so we invited him here today to maybe talk a little bit about that.
Great, welcome. Thanks for being here.
You're very welcome. Thanks for the invitation.
Yep. Want to tell us a little bit about the Dark Skies Initiative and how you see that maybe working or not working in our community right now?
Yeah, I guess, first off, just a couple things. One would be, I do applaud the city for the lighting project. A lot of the things that you're doing there are, you know, really are aligned with the concept of dark skies. Maybe later during the day, I can talk about some of the areas of improvement, not necessarily in the lighting project, but broader perspective, the overview of how the city manages lighting in this city. I do want to mention that lighting is not important just for astronomers. There are a number of other aspects to dark skies that are important related to human health, wildlife, pollinators, navigation at night by various species. There's just a whole host of aspects to dark skies that make it important to pay attention to those. The lead organization in dark skies is called the Dark Sky International. They used to be called the International Dark Sky Association. They changed their name just recently. And they have a great website, darksky.org, darksky.org. And it talks about principles of lighting. It talks about some of the negative and positive aspects of LED lighting. And so it's a great resource for people to use. I don't know if anybody has any questions they would like to ask me on this or if I can just keep rambling, because that's what it will be, is rambling.
Well, I mean, a little more about maybe, you know, my knowledge about being an official dark skies community or city. I know some of our neighbors on the West End have done that. You know, do you think, what are those standards? And do you think that's something the city of Montrose should be aiming to achieve? Or is that, you know, a city of our size, is it even possible? Tell us more about what it would mean to be a recognized dark skies community.
Okay, that's a program that Dark Sky International stewards. And they have a number of different categories for entities that could become a dark sky place. There are dark sky parks. Black Canyon is a dark sky park. We have, I think, nine now in Colorado that are dark sky parks. Mesa Verde, Hovenweep, which is shared, Dinosaur. You can be a state park and be designated. Jackson Lake State Park on the Eastern Plains is a designated dark sky park. There are dark sky sanctuaries and dark sky reserves, which are intended to be the very darkest places around. And the West End of Montrose County and San Miguel, well, I guess it's just the West End of San Miguel County is seeking to be a dark sky preserve. And they've got a group in Norwood that's shepherding that along. And then there's dark sky communities. And Peonya submitted an application to be a dark sky community, but Ridgeway, Norwood, Naterita, Nukla are all dark sky communities here in our, in our region. To be a dark sky community, you have to have, most importantly, a lighting ordinance that supports dark skies. And there is a model lighting ordinance out there that you could use as a guide. It's not required that you use that one, but certainly when Dark Sky International is going to look at your application, they're going to say, how does your lighting ordinance line up with what we feel are, you know, the important ordinance, you know, important aspects of a lighting ordinance? The principles around dark skies are essentially rolled down to only have light where you need it, only light when you need it. In other words, you might consider putting timers in on lights. Lighting, and when we talk about light where you need it, that means essentially be shielded. There's no reason to put light into the sky. That's just wasted energy and wasted money. And we probably all can think of plenty of examples of light that goes up in the sky, even in Montrose. And that's wasting money. I'm drawing a blank here.
I mean, do you think knowing, I would assume, it sounds like you're pretty familiar with what the requirements are to be a dark skies community. Do you think that's something that Montrose should attain to, could attain to, given our size and our density and our current commercial businesses? Or should we be looking at, you know, that isn't attainable, but we're going to do the best we can within what we have? Or what is your perspective?
I figured I would get that. I believe that any community less than, say, 200,000 can be a dark sky community if they have money.
Ah, okay.
Time to implement things. Nothing happens quickly when you come to engineering. And political will.
Okay.
In Montrose, I'm not sure any of those are there right now, but perhaps that's the reason for the meeting today. And I think in the original article about the lighting project, you know, it was stated that this is intended to make steps forward in dark skies, but not necessarily to achieve dark sky status. Because that won't happen in three years.
Okay.
Or five years.
Okay.
Should you, should you, I think you should strive for it with the recognition that without time and money and political will, it may never be achieved. Flagstaff, Arizona is a dark sky community and it's much bigger than Montrose is.
Yeah. And I think they also, well, I was gonna just give an opinion, I don't know. That Flagstaff, you know, their tourism base is folks who are seeking that kind of an environment. And our tourism base is people who are passing through and buying groceries. And I'm not sure they, yeah, I mean, it's a different community than Montrose.
No, I recognize, yeah, I recognize that.
No, it sounds like you do too.
Yeah.
I feel both of you guys moving a little and like, wanting to say something, so I don't.
Well, you know, I know for a fact that probably about 15 years ago, the city did get involved and showed a little bit of consideration for dark skies. I was on the council at that time. And we initiated new ordinance on subdivisions pertaining to street lighting, corner street lighting and street lighting in residential areas. And so I know from my own experience, there are some areas, streets in Montrose, that because of this ordinance are quite dim. And I've had other people in the community tell me that, hey, we need a little bit more lighting, especially some of the older persons. I know for a fact, myself, around my yard, I've had to install more lights based on the fact that my eyesight in the dark is not as good as it used to be. I'm 75 and I like to spend as much time as I can outside. And the other thing that I've noticed too, and I'm not sure what has caused, the cost for it, is the fact that a lot of the lighting on the sides of the house have covers on the top, which was part of the city ordinance. But now people are going to these motion sensing lights that just shoot lights all over. Could be the cost of electricity, that they're not turning on their lights and they're going more to solar. I don't know. But I do know from my experience that the city has done, I think, quite a bit to help dark skies. Because it was the Black Canyon Astronomical Society that actually came and had that discussion with us years ago as to why we initiated the ordinance.
So I see that when you mentioned what it would take money, time, and political will, when you said money, there was a lot of head nodding from staff. So maybe we'll go over to staff, either one of you now, and maybe you can talk a little bit about what the city's doing to move us towards being more dark skies friendly and the realities of what it, what it takes. Like, let's boast what we're doing, but then also how, you know, what are the constraints? Why aren't we just doing all of it right now?
Right.
What is the actual cost?
No, absolutely. So actually, since you as a council has approved us to do a light exchange with DMEA, what they're actually doing is taking many of our old lighting fixtures that are not dark side compliant. Right now, we have a number of mercury vapor lights as well as HPS lights. Those total around 2,000. We already have, our DMEA has already done the swap out on about 539 street lights to a new LED style that is dark sky compliant. And we hope to continue that throughout the next four years. That would complete all of our street lighting to bring those fixtures to a dark side compliant bulb or a fixture.
I just want to, for the public who may or may not be listening with interest, can you tell everyone about how the DMEA owns them, but we pay the electricity, so when we wanted them switched out and they weren't burnt out, like how, explain that a little bit?
Yeah. So we do have a franchise agreement with DMEA that they will provide street lighting for the city of Montrose. So all the infrastructure, the physical fixture and pole itself is DMEA owned and operated infrastructure, but we do pay, the city of Montrose will pay a tariff to have those powered. So we do actually have light at all those intersections. So doing this not only brings us closer to a dark sky compliant community, but it will also greatly reduce in our, in our overall costs that we pay for those street lighting. Yeah.
And I guess the point is that the city paid money now to switch out lights that DMEA would have replaced them when they burnt out.
Correct.
They weren't burnt out, but the city proactively spent money to replace them.
Correct.
And that was with council's approval, because it was more than the amount that we can spend without council's approval.
Yep.
And that's a three-year program?
It's a four-year program.
Four-year program.
We've already completed, this will be the first year, which, which will be over here shortly, and then we're looking forward to get started on the second year. But those, once it's all said and done, the LEDs compared to the street lighting that we have now, it's about a two and a half year return on investment on what it costs to install those lighting versus what the power bill is for the existing fixtures now.
So when we asked, what I think is an obvious question, well, why don't we replace them all right now? Why are we taking four years? The answer is DMEA simply doesn't have the capacity to go around and replace them all right now.
Yep. And we have a good relationship with them and we wouldn't want to, you know, we would not want to put that, that load on them.
Do any, just making sure you're in the mic.
Yeah.
Do any of you know if there's any, if you've seen any statistics on communities that have become dark sky communities, what impact, if any, that has on crime?
So this is kind of an interesting, it's a great question, because this is where dark skies kind of becomes a little bit conflicted with SEPTED or crime prevention through environmental design. And that's kind of more or less handled through the police department. But this is, this is a dynamic that you kind of see, and this is the common clash of police department wants more lighting because they want more safety, right? Same thing goes with landscaping. Want less landscaping or less kind of shrubbery because you want more visibility to be able to see if there's any issues, any crime that is being committed. And Blaine can probably speak to that a little bit more. But that's the, kind of the needle to thread here in terms of dark skies versus, you know, lighting and environmental design as a whole. And so from, from like a new development standpoint, we do require lighting and parking lot lighting. That said, it is to be shielded, just as we kind of are discussing here. Not light spillage on other properties, preferred to have timers on lighting when appropriate. So those are some general goals that, that we have that try to align with those dark skies. But that is the struggle, I think, with all communities, is that direct conflict between SEPTED requirements and SEPTED recommendations, I should say.
SEPTED as well.
Crime prevention through environmental design, those requirements we look at with new development. And then, and then lighting as a whole, so. As far as statistics go, I couldn't give you any, but I know, and I'm sure we could maybe have some more dialogue specific to that, but that's, that's one of those conflict points there.
Now, there's been a number of studies regarding that. Are they robust? That's perhaps a different question. But a number of police departments or, you know, say sociological type studies have indicated that there's no evidence that brighter lights decrease crime. And it's related to partially the glare that you get from bright lights. If you're walking down a pathway and somebody's put up a really bright light because they think it's safe, you see nobody in the shadows. Whereas more appropriate design around the lights would still provide safety, but it also says that there's no glare and somebody can't hide in the shadows that the glare So fully agree with Jace. This comes up over and over and over, the conflict between, you know, no lights at all, which is not what Dark Sky International asks for, and safety. And, you know, the idea of shielding is sending light only where you need it. The idea of timers or motion sensors or anything like, those are called adaptive controls and the concept is only light when you need it.
Mr. Frank, is there anything you want to chime in with question-wise or comment-wise?
When I was on the county planning commission, we had that same discussion a lot. And the one thing we discussed is that crime prevention is based on the way that the light is used and not how bright it is. So one of the things that we did and included was the downward direction and the shielding. And as the gentleman has said, that the, having the lights there but less glaring is actually fine. So I think we're all on the same page here. Thank you.
What do we, Jace, what exactly, like if a new subdivision is going in, what, what are current lighting ordinances say about a new subdivision and street lighting or lighting of an entrance sign to the subdivision?
Sure. Typically, when it comes to new subdivisions, and I think Councilmember Yulbury hit it as far as that past ordinance, it's really specific to corners. That's where the required street lighting is, is at those corners. If a developer wanted to have a slightly lighter subdivision, they have the right to do so if they wanted to add more lighting. But again, what you're looking at is those downward facing fixtures that are cut off. And, but yeah, it, it is specific to corners. And I think Scott Murphy might be able to give a little bit more robust of a response. And maybe Nick can provide more context if, but.
So we don't limit lighting. We don't tell a developer, like, you can only put in lighting on the corner. So a developer could say, hey, I really think that lighting is awesome. I'm going to light up my new subdivision. And we don't limit that.
We, we actually do limit that. So we do have four bulbs that we allow to be installed. And it's based on the road type, so whether it be an arterial all the way down to a residential street. So there would be a maximum amount that we would allow. DMEA is only going to stock those four bulbs, so that, that also helps in that regard. You know, they're not going to be able to go out and have them install whatever they want. And all four of those bulbs do happen to just fall right within that dark sky compliant rating, so.
Yeah, and particularly at the residential level, the standards that the city has are compliant, perhaps even a bit more compliant than what Dark Skies International would require as far as the color of the light, the brightness of the light, and, and the fact it has to be shielded.
Okay.
So that's, I was very happy to see that.
Doing pretty good in that.
You know, what, what they did, absolutely.
What, what areas do we fall particularly sharp in?
Yeah, where is there room for improvement?
A couple things, actually probably three. In terms of lights themselves, it'd probably be Townsend and Main. And, and we, we talked about that before, that those are major arterials. Some of those sections even, don't even belong to us, as I understand. And so the lights that are there are, are, you know, they're pretty high and they're, and they're pretty bright. And if you drive underneath them, there's a glare associated with it. And if you're going to drive right underneath it and it's really bright, you can't avoid the glare. If I was, there are two things that I would like to focus on in terms of improvement. One is enforcement of existing ordinances. I don't know how many of you drive around at dark like I do, but if you live in Montrose, you probably can drive no more than five minutes and find a light somewhere that's not compliant with 10-year-old city ordinance on lighting. So that's, and that's related to enforcement. And that actually goes back to, to the money aspect. You know, if money was unlimited, you guys would have 100 people enforcing not just lighting codes, but all the codes. But you don't.
Right.
So that's when city management and the city council gets involved and, okay, what are our priorities? And I understand that. The second thing would be, and let me give you an example. The electronic signs, and we're getting more and more of them around here. And the city ordinance is, it can't change more frequently than every eight seconds. There are a number of, I won't name any places, but if you drive around at dark, you can find them or see me later. Where the signs are in motion, they're constantly moving. They cannot be in compliance with an eight-second setting. Okay.
You're talking about like commercial signage?
Or these, well, these digital signs that all kinds of, you know, small, small businesses, large businesses, or, or some, sometimes they're not even businesses are putting up.
We are seeing more and more of those signs, so, you know, and it would also seem that, I'm glad you recognize that there's a cost to just send someone to enforce the ordinance, that that involves staff time and resources. But also, it seems like an electronic sign, it would at least be easier for the owner to reprogram it.
That's correct.
Than a whole lighting thing they put in and, and then tell them, oh, now you need to change that. But it seems like that would be low-hanging fruit, which is, I guess, what we asked you to point out.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
And, and the original city ordinance around electronic signs was 30 seconds. And some of the people that were putting in signs then, they were 30 seconds. And I suspect there was some pushback about if you're driving by a sign and the idea is for somebody to read a sign as you're driving by, 30 seconds is a long time. So I think then the ordinance was modified to eight seconds. And that's exactly, as you point out, that's easy to do. And it can be easy to change a constantly moving sign to at least eight-second sign.
So our city attorney's at the table, so I'm going to throw out a legal question. And that is, are these sign ordinances that we have are, as a home rule? Oh, okay.
He's had his hand up for a while.
Okay, sorry. I'll come back to you. Yes, Mr. Frank?
I'm kind of curious if a lot of these businesses are just unaware of that eight-second limitation. There's a lot of, I'm not going to throw them under the bus, but the Elks Lodge has one that is always moving, always changing. And I just wonder if they're even aware of that code.
Yeah, good point. So maybe it wouldn't be that hard to, wouldn't be that hard. It always involves someone's time, someone's, yeah. But to our city attorney, are our ordinances, do we have any conflict? Are there state laws that we have to be aware of? Or are we, as a home rule city, and our ordinances, these are ours to control and we're good with our ordinances? Or is there any? I know you've been going through and looking at things that might need to be cleaned up that are outdated. It's been mentioned a couple times that our lighting ordinance might be 10, 15 years old. But as far as you know, it's, it's still good and aligned with any kind of state law?
So far as I know, it is still good. We just recodified it as part of the reorganization project with Mr. Dahl and his crew. I think this is an appropriate time to look at it for updates, since we'll be going back through that again with round two of the land use code modifications and improvements.
Okay.
So this is a good time to look at it. I'm not aware to address your question directly of any prohibitions on legislating in this area. We are home rule. I think we have generally plenary authority to do this type of thing.
Sure. It might be interesting to take a look at our ordinance as it's written. And you mentioned that the Dark Skies International has a model ordinance and see where we could perhaps update and be more in align, although I understand it seems like we're not going to overnight become a dark skies community. But we could look at that and see if there's room for improvement in ours that we can achieve realistically in Montrose.
You asked me areas to improve. The second one is the lighting ordinance. Absolutely.
Perfect.
And lighting technology, particularly around LEDs, and our understanding of the environmental impacts of artificial light at night have changed in the last 10 years significantly. And so, yes, it's, it's time to update and I'm more than happy to participate in that. The two, you know, specific details, I think, that would require the most effort are going to be a requirement for the color of the light and adaptive controls.
So is, are those issues that you see as being controversial issues within the community?
Not for the most part. I do not. I know from, from personal experience that putting in overhead lights I know from, from personal experience that putting in overhead lights of the kind of temperature that you're doing at the residential level, which are like 2,700 or 3,000 degrees, that's a measure of color that we use, has no impact on the cost to DMEA. You can have one that's 5,000 or 4,000 or 3,000, it's the same cost.
Early on in your comments, you mentioned of, of one of the issues being political in nature. Could you expand on that as to what you, where you see the politics in this?
Maybe, maybe political will was the wrong phrase, but it's essentially an issue of priorities for this group. You know, in a city with all kinds of things going on, trying to deal with growth aggrain, trying to deal with, with, with housing and all the impacts on the economy that that has, you have to set priorities somewhere. That's what you get elected to do. And sometimes your choice of priorities don't necessarily match up with mine or Jace's, you know, or somebody out else in, in Montrose. But that, that's, when I talk about political will, that's, that's essentially what has, what it has to do with.
Yeah, because from my perspective, and I, I understand it's a, it, it does boil down to an issue of having sufficient staff to enforce our ordinances on the one hand. On the other hand, we probably shouldn't have an ordinance on the books that is particularly a valuable ordinance and that sit there and not be enforced. And so that's, to me, that's not costly and that's not political and it shouldn't be controversial.
Yeah. The ordinances without enforcement are no ordinances at all.
Right.
In fact, it's probably even worse than no ordinance at all because everybody thinks you're covered, but you're not.
So it feels like there's room for improvement that might, that we could move forward on, on looking at electronic signs and if nothing else, perhaps reminding owners of electronic signs about our current ordinance. It'd be nice to maybe start with the pavilion sign and make sure we're in compliance before we start asking other folks to be. We probably are, but let's look at, let's look at our own signs first and make sure we're good. And secondly, as we update our ordinances under land use code, look at that model code. Is there a third or a fourth one that we could also be looking at? Or those, those are really two great places to start?
I think those are the, the great places to start.
As a resident, I'm curious, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, just in, I suspect that the pavilion sign is in compliance. And a lot of what they're putting up is related to something on their schedule that's happening in a week. So they put it up for a week and the same thing stays up for a week. So it's clearly in compliance. So I drive by on Niagara a lot, and I don't think I've ever noticed that it seems to be changing more than eight seconds. I don't think it changes more than eight hours, to be honest.
Good. I just want to make sure that we're, that we're following our ordinance before we send letters to folks, reminding them about the ordinance.
I guess, I guess I would wonder, what is the permitting process around lights that is, that is a barrier to people building things or constructing things that aren't necessarily in compliance with any of your codes? Why would somebody be unaware of an eight-second requirement other than it's a really minor detail in the ordinances?
And that's where I can chime in, happy to kind of take that one. I think when it comes to new signs, all new signs require a sign permit. And that, that ordinance is actually specified. And I can think of one very recently that it was actually explicitly stated that as far as changing of signs, not allowed. And that hasn't happened. And so that's a, that's a letter, that's an enforcement mechanism that we can send out. But there is sign permits. We do look specifically at that code. I'll say when it comes to signage, there is times where people just don't go through the appropriate permitting process. And then it come, becomes an enforcement scenario where we're made aware of it in some fashion, whether it be by a member of the public. We see it, things along those lines. And then we would reach out and make them go through the appropriate permitting process. But it is, it, it comes back to kind of that full circle of staff, true level of, you know, level enforcement, the things that we're discussing.
When you're made aware of something like that, then that goes to code enforcement?
Yeah, and, and depending on, you know, where it falls, typically something like that would fall within the planning department. So we would be the ones that reach directly out to the property owner or whoever. If we have somebody who applied formally for a sign permit and they just didn't abide by exactly what was stated, then we'd just reach out to them directly. But yeah, code enforcement just through our division, not necessarily the PD.
Not the PD. That's a different kind of code enforcement.
Yep. But we work, we work very close together on, you know, all enforcement issues, so.
So you'll be the one driving around at night watching for those lights and not code enforcement?
In theory, we, we take, we take people seriously when we get complaints. We, we do. And, and we try to, to get on things quickly. Again, a lot of it is complaint driven when it comes to that. We don't have a very robust staff in terms of constantly going out and seeking, so we do look for input.
Does our Better Montrose app have a, like, if I saw a sign that was changing more than every eight seconds and I wanted to let you guys know, is there a process on a Better Montrose app where I can say I have a signage problem? This is what it is?
Yes, so for any of the, any public that's listening, we always recommend that you hop on Better Montrose. They do have a way there for you to report that, and that's seen by multiple people live.
Okay. I know I could report like a, a light that was broken, but I can also say like, this one doesn't look like it's, oh.
There's, there's a generic, like a street lighting issue, and then you can add there in the comments what's going on.
Okay, so, but what if it's not a street light, it's a commercial business sign? Is there an obvious place?
That's something that we can add in there, but there's, there's a, there's a pretty miscellaneous one in there for, for lighting.
I wonder if we could add that though? If we're really saying, hey, this is an area we're going to, no pun intended, but shine a light on? And, you know, sometimes when you, when you spend a little more time and attention looking at something, then that allows change to happen just by literally focusing on it a little. And if we made that easier for citizens to help us find those signs that aren't in compliance.
Right.
Because I know sometimes, I tried to report something once and I just couldn't figure out, it didn't seem to fit anywhere, so I kind of gave up as opposed to trying to make it.
Right.
Fit something that it wasn't right.
And we talked about the permitting process, and that's of course for, for new construction or major upgrades. But there's a whole nother aspect here, and that's existing lights. And of course, a homeowner can put any kind of light in on their house that they would like. And then, then you get involved in, you know, the legal aspects of what rights do we as a city have to say, the light that you just put in in a 30-year-old house that is not compliant? What, what, what are, what are the city's legal rights? And that's where Better Montrose, I think, plays an important part. And I know it gets used for lighting.
Okay. For residential, this is what I was going to ask earlier, for my own, like, personal house and, and I, I should know the answer to this, but are there city laws that say what I can and can't do for the lights on my, on my garage that face the streets? And I just, maybe an education campaign slash, I don't know if there's something we could do around that or if that, I don't know.
Well, I thought our ordinance, I thought our ordinance specifically described the types of lights you can have on the outside front of your garage and to, they were to be covered kind of, so they don't shine up into the sky.
Yes, I'm, I'm actually not very familiar with it. I'm reading through it right now, but our, we do have a lighting standard ordinance, 11-9-3, that does specify.
So maybe just because I can go and buy a really bright light at Home Depot and put it on my garage doesn't necessarily mean I should or I'm technically allowed to?
Right, yeah. And it, it circles back to the idea of light trespass as well. And again, we, we talked about the lighting code and this was carried over with that code consolidation process. But this is an area we have targeted as a staff to update moving forward and look at it and, and work with, with citizens to kind of be more proactive and have a better, more modernized code.
Cool.
Mayor Bynum, we have 10 minutes remaining.
Thank you very much.
And I would say that education plays a real role in that aspect of it. It's non-confrontational. And I think you would find a lot of the people that would say, I didn't realize my light was sober. I didn't realize it was an issue. I like dark skies too. I can fix that because you've informed me about it.
Yeah, I mean, that's how I would feel about it certainly, as opposed to getting a note that said you must remove all your lights, they're not legal. More like, hey, did you know? And I would be like, oh yeah, I didn't think of that. That sounds, that makes sense.
And darksky.org has a lot of information on dealing with neighbors, you know, dealing with cities, all from an educational perspective rather than from a confrontational perspective.
I know that, for example, over at Home Depot, it's getting harder and harder to find these 100 amp lights or regular light bulbs are all going to LED style. So I believe that eventually you won't be able to buy anything other than an LED light to install in your house, which should help with compliance on lighting.
Yeah, I guess I'll expand on that a little bit. I mean, I, I don't fault LED technology at all. It's saving an enormous amount of money as, you know, as well as reducing emissions at the power generation point, you know, just because of the nature of LEDs. But over the last 10 or 15 years that LEDs have been around, we've learned a lot about them. And one of the things is that it's not the watts of a light that's important, it's the lumens. That's a measure of the light that strikes the ground. And, you know, the result is if you think in terms of watt equivalents from an incandescent like an HPS or a mercury vapor to an LED, chances are what you're going to get is more lumens than you thought you were going to get.
Yeah.
And so that leaves to really brightness. And the second thing is, again, the temperature of the light. Because the first generation of LEDs were all this blue, white light.
Right.
Well, you could, I mean, you could program LEDs now to be green if you like it. So yeah, LEDs are an important advancement, but it was a double-edged sword.
It, it is, especially again, I think about myself as a homeowner. I'm now like, wow, these LED lights, they're, they're relatively inexpensive and they're not as expensive to operate. And wow, I'm going to, I'm going to put them all over because this is fun. And they're like, oh yeah, there's a ramification to that too. I don't necessarily need to light up the trees in the corner of my yard.
Get my with 450 instead of 800, right?
Yeah, yeah. So as we wrap up, appreciate so much you coming. Do you feel like you got a chance to say what you wanted to say? Or is there any closing remarks you want to make?
I did. And again, thank you very much. And, and again, I'm happy to continue, you know, to work with, you know, with, with the crew, with whoever wants on providing information, on helping with lighting ordinances and things like that. But, but thanks for the opportunity. And I learned some things today too that are helpful to me. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Thanks for participating. Any closing comments from staff on?
No, I think, I'll just maybe close out by saying, I think it was, it was good feedback for us. It was some of these things, at least from the planning side. And again, planning, public works, kind of separate avenues here, but all the same mission. As we move forward with updating our code, I think we'll continue to look at this more deeply and, and get some more public feedback and public interaction and more engagement sessions on it. And I think as far as some other things, I feel like we're, we're doing some good things when it comes to lighting as, as it is and trying our best with new construction. But I totally understand from the, the thought of, well, what do we do with some of these older businesses, some of these older properties? I think that's really where that cost comes into play is, you know, how much, how much can we really push from that aspect? But appreciate the time today. I thought it was great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. And we'll convene in 15 minutes for our regularly scheduled work session. Thanks for coming.